Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Call this public hearing to... Call this public hearing to order.
You're not having a quiet, I guess, because I signed into conversation. Thank you very much.
I'll read the notice of the public hearing. The council of the city of Louisville shall proceed with a public hearing regarding consideration on affordance to establish water and wastewater rates and charges pursuant to a five-year schedule during the regular council meeting on August 14, 2023, begins at 6:00 p.m. at City Hall, 6055 Main Street. Louisville Public is invited to attend and be heard. I apologize if I'm not, I don't conduct this public hearing the way that Mr. Holman usually does, but for this kind of public hearing, I'm simply going to open the floor for comments regarding the issue that's the public hearing is being held for. Again, there will not be any, we won't impose any time limit on comments. If you do begin to repeat things that you've already said, then I may interrupt you and ask you to move on to a different subject, but otherwise, there'll be no imposition of any time limit on your remarks. If you do wish to speak, if you would come up to the podium, if you'll identify yourself and then make your comments. So at this time, we'll open the floor then for comments. Anyone wish to make any comments regarding the public hearing on an ordinance to establish water and wastewater rates and charges pursuant to a five-year schedule? Anyone who wish to make any comments?
Mr. Rivers, may I give them a little bit of background?
Yes, sir, please, absolutely.
So, let's start with all those in favor of wanting the water and sewer rate increased, raise your hand. That being said, so this is a challenge that the city and all municipalities and county face as well. So this stuff, there was actually a study done by desolate caterers on water and sewer back in fiscal year 21 that brought forward a rate study, and they looked from an operational standpoint and from a capital standpoint. So this is a pretty thorough study that they took upon themselves and were very appreciative of the work that they put forward. That being said, in their study, like I said, they separated what we call capital improvements away from operational. Now, you've heard us and you'll hear us talk again tonight about how we look at funds on operational versus capital components. That being said, this being done back in 2021, it's a little dated, not unusual. Some friends of mine in South Hall only recently adopted a plan that they had done a rate study on back in 2017. It took them a little bit longer than it did for us, but the bigger challenges that we've had since this study was done was the impact of the economy, and we all saw the economy blue, we've all seen it. Unfortunately, in the last two years, inflation, you can throw COVID into the equation if you want to as well, but in this past year, and you've heard, for those that are in attendance regularly, you've heard us talk about where we've experienced some costs and anticipate some additional costs. And one of the examples that I gave with council as we were going through last year is the expenses we were having for materials for water and sewer, and primarily had a lot to do with the availability of the product in the marketplace, but fortunately, we're not that dependent on chemicals, but we have increases as much as 60%. And that's a challenge for us in this current fiscal year as we were looking in adopting this year's budget, a challenge that the council faced in addition to increased costs we've incurred with inflation. But the other side of that is our utility and our utility costs. And as you know, Georgia Power this year, for those that don't know, you probably already feeling it in your pocketbook, you may not be using any more electricity, but you're paying 14% more. And before the end of this fiscal year, it's likely that we'll see another 3% increase, and I'm not an expert on that, but also going to bring another reactor on. And that increase could even go up further than that. And that's one of our biggest challenges that we've had at our facilities that we operate out there. So today, when the council is considering, like I said, you didn't see any of them raise their hands for those in favor of a rate increase either, because nobody is. But interestingly, as we look at this, you have to pay your bills, and they've been very good about recognizing what is our cost versus what are our rate charges. And fortunately for us, we barely bounced, even matter of fact, I'll talk quickly about that, there are some opportunities that we've seen today. We're looking at some numbers out here that'll show you the recommendation that they came back with was a 3% increase on water and wastewater, 5% over the next five years. We know this last year, we experienced costs higher than 3% on both water and sewer. So whereas today, we may just be playing a catch-up game, but what I want everybody to know is that one of the things we look at, let's see if I can find some detail on it. So when we look at what we do with rates, we did a little bit of comparison, actually, Brian, over there on the table, you've got proposed rate increases and implementation schedule, what the council goes forward to adopt it over the five years. And then the other side of that is, is we've looked at, we can actually compare ourselves to other communities. And when we did that, just to go over real quick as an example, you had water and sewer not garbage collection, but and use 5,000 gallons a month, that's the threshold we use. All you, City Pantins, $85 a month, City Gate was $76.19, and that's if you're inside the city, it's outside considerably more. Banks County, $85.38. Flaherty Branch, $95.04. Rousleton, $90.78. Pornelia, $65.14. City of Baldwin, $107.15. Delonica, $101.91. And if the council goes forward with what's been proposed this evening, they would be at $83.77. And that's based on the 3% increase that you're seeing up on board from the study itself. The other thing we look at is how, when we're doing some comparison, we're trying to figure out, you can't compare apples to apples. The example is, is our wastewater treatment plant is highly advanced, technologically advanced, so fortunately, that actually brings us across some savings and we compare ourselves to other communities. We'll pick on Flaherty Branch tonight, they're good folks, don't misunderstand that, but they're upgrading their plant, now they're going to have to realize that cost and the expense of doing that. So when we look at it, there's a couple of things we look at as well, cost recovery, which is a, so cost recovery is reflective of your operational costs. And right now, based on these new rates that's been proposed, I'm gonna get this is, we being yellow, we're not the green, but we're only 1.02% if they approve these rates. Interestingly, for our area, our medium affordability, so this is the average household in the city of Louisville, it's pretty good data, it's not perfect, but pretty good data, long enough because they're using recent census numbers, the reflection cost would be 1.93%. And we're sensitive to that as well, you know, it's a, I don't know, if you're like at my household, you know, two pizzas a month, that's what equipment, going out for dinner and what have you, that's probably equivalent of what we're doing here, or getting cable television or disc network, something like that, you're paying even more than that. So understand that for our group, and clearly that's true in the cost of recovery numbers, you can see that, and you can see past audits in the last number of years, where we balance ourselves very well. So do expect anybody to be happy with the idea that we're going to propose rate increases. I know that answer, but are we sensitive and want to hear your comments? We do, so come on up, if you would, Mr. Rivers, want to give us your name, where you live, and let's hear what you have to say. I thought Brian was coming up first.
Don't be shy.
Can I, you're up here, give a little clarification on this?
Sure.
For the rate increase performance?
Just you, yeah.
This is like you have the table right?
Right.
On this, this 23th, anyway, current, if you're current, you have the base rate plus you have, say if you have 18,000 gallons, you have 5,000, plus 10,000, plus the 10,000, plus the 15,000.
So let me tell you how that works. That's a good question. And matter of fact, let me pull that up, let's do that. Because that actually is based on the number of customers that we bring into the equation. All right, so can everybody see the board up here? So what the mayor pointed out is, this is your proposed base rate, this is current. If you use zero to 5,000 gallons, you're charged $4.55 per thousand.
Looking 13.75, mayor.
Plus 13.75. If you use over 5,000 gallons, then it's $4.75, it's what we call, the state actually makes us do this conservation numbers. So what they're trying to discourage is large users and you'd be more conservative. So these rates, 5,000, 1 to 10,000, go 4.75 to 10,000.
Plus, 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 4.5, 5,000, plus 13, 13.75, for that you.
Everything's going to take a base rate, and then that's going to be per thousand gallons you use. So follow this for a second, that's how we arrived at a number, 13.75, 4.55, all right? And that's going to be, so if you use 5,000 gallons, let's just round the numbers up and say that's $25 plus 13.75, we'll do the quick math and say we're close to 40 bucks. So that's water on them, okay? As a matter of fact, in these details, I gave examples, in this last billing month that we went through, the average water bill on using the 5,000 gallons was $37.71 on average. So, and sewer's the same way, 13.75 base rate, then zero to 5,000 gallons, so if you use 4,999 gallons, you're going to get charged $6.11 per thousand gallons. As a matter of fact, sewer billing for last month was on average for each customer was $38.2 on average. Everybody got a good understanding of that now? And then these rates reflect as you go across the board if the council were to go forward with the increases. All right, so don't be shy, come up and let us know your thoughts.
Good evening, everyone, Robert Grissel, Mayor of Louisville. Now, I understand some of this about needing, maybe needing a rate increase, but as Dennis said, the economic impact that everything's had, well, all of the citizens of Louisville have been impacted by their community themselves with everything going up as it is. And with our new sewer plant that we had several years ago, and rates increased for that sewer plant, and other rates have already increased for tap fees, things like that, serving the customers that we have now, is this needed? You know, when they start building on these homes down here that'll be on water, there's going to be tap fees that are going to cover the stress. I understand the stress on the system, and as things have to be, you know, fixed, rebuilt, new and built, you know, lift stations, the impellers, pumps at the towers, things like that, I understand that, but we've already got that built in to handle, taking care of the system and the stress on it. So my biggest question is, why is this needed? As Louisville has had an economy impact, we have had an impact on us. So are we increasing our rates just to match other counties? That's not a reason to raise our rates just because other counties have their rates higher. Thank you.
The next one, whose names? Asha, lunch. Or other comments? One once?
Until we figure out what's going on with the heavy industrial and stuff like that, we're going to be raising up rates on sewer for the impact in the systems. And also, it's not guaranteed that that other subdivision is going to be built. If you do that, the chicken industry come in here, and it'll take on the whole Athens district up there. So I pose no doubt on that. Thank you.
Other comments? Other comments? One once? One twice? Other comments? Well, I'll close the public hearing this time, Mr. Mayor will return the agenda to you.
We're working right here tonight. We have pretty extensive, I mean, I feel like, they're teaching us, letting us both in our job to, personally, we have been paid there as to you, to say a prayer.
That's great. Father, we love you, just thankful for another opportunity to gather here in our city. And tonight, we're just, first of all, just want to pray over all those that are in our community that are sick and hurting and some tragedies that has happened over the past couple of weeks. God, we just lift all those families up, and we pray over our mayor and our city councils tonight, that you give them wisdom during this planning session, that you give them guidance, and Father, that they would just make decisions that's in the best interest of our community. Father, may you be honored to all decisions made tonight, and ask us all of Jesus' name.
Amen.
Let's never finish. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, it's time for citizens' comments. Bring it up.
I guess I'm going to want, it's not shy tonight, I guess, I don't know. I'd like to talk about our latest thing that was in the paper. It's a shame that we have to go away from trying to hire an assistant city manager and table it because people that's supposed to keep things privileged information can't keep it privileged. It's embarrassing to our city when another person that has, should have no understanding, no idea of who those candidates are, is calling a candidate before the candidate even knows anything about it, according to his reply in the paper. I mean, what's going on? Who's in charge? Who's leaking the information that we can't even hire Dennis help without it being leaked out before it's even approached and looked at and voted on? I think that needs to have a really hard look at it on the way things are being handled. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. We'll have a little comment, comments later in the, everybody's got a copy of them in? And if those over the screen, if that means you're getting changes to them? Right, class, this month, it's Georgia colors. It shows U.S. colors, it's a, it's a, it's a, for the drawing, so you got, you're drawing them into it, that's City Hall, no? Council meeting, questions at citylouis.com, is that the right place?
Absolutely.
And I'll, I'll, we're going to be drawing this month, determine this, so it's not a sign thing, but it's council, it's a drawing thing, so can you have, there are entries in there, you want to draw it, everybody? Okay, Dennis, I guess, Cameron, are you?
There's not nearly enough, we'll start with that, let me grab them.
Garner said you have some.
We got the positives, so given that it's working all in our favor. All right, so let's, let's talk first about how much money we got in the bank, which, like I said, is not nearly enough, and I'll pull that up, so everybody can see it. So, and I'm giving copies to the council, let's bring it up, just don't let her stand anywhere. Always entertainment. So, let's talk for just a second, so what, you're going to hear us, I gotta check the microphone, but I was just, oh, it's temperamental, it doesn't work. All right, so we, for those in the audience, we keep track of 12 different funds, these funds right here are the ones that are dealing impact, for the most part, opportunities of capital and operations. So Hall County's Splot 8 is identified there, Banks County's Splot, Banks County's Splot 7, as well as Bank County's, T Splot, and Hall County's Splot 7, we've still got some dollars up though from that, that's been exhausted. The good news is for us, we used to have to keep an escrow account off to the side, we still have that money separated, but that escrow account money is now available for the council to identify, that's a 101,000, so that's good in a lot of different ways, it also says that they pay their bills well. Water TCRs, you've heard Mr. Grissel mention it earlier about tap fees, well, we call them TCRs, and that's a bounce we have underwater and sewer, as you can see, that's almost $1 million. The utility fund, which is our operational budget, 699,000, and the general fund, so the good news for us, although we spent a few dollars since first part of June, you know, good news was for us, their bank balances remain pretty constant. As a matter of fact, this is a good time to go ahead and mention, as we delve into our operational costs in the general fund and water and sewer, one of them is our Splot dollars continue to be high, our water and sewer rates, when I say high, that's higher than projected, our water and sewer rates collections right now, good time of year, everybody's watering, trying to water, or pleading, or this, that, and other thing, so not surprising, those are a little bit up for the summer months, not surprising there. And then we're going to talk, let's talk about operations for a second. So we look at the general fund operations, remember, that's usually not a capital component in there, but as we sit here today, early in the year, you know, we just came out of July, our first fiscal month, for those in the audience, a reminder to the council, the bulk of your dollars doesn't come in until the third and fourth quarter, and we're in a fiscal year that begins July 1, and it ends December 30. So this first part, first semester for us, is always tough, and it is on all local governments, especially for communities like ours that don't have property taxes. You'll even find some of the municipalities and county governments go out and borrow money between now and November until they get their property taxes, and we don't have that luxury, nor do we go out and borrow money, we live within our means. So that's what we'll talk about right now. So the good news is, lost collections, although we haven't posted them all yet, they're actually up 8% above our projections. For those in the room, that should hear a sigh of relief, let's hope that continues. That's for Hall County. For Banks County, I love to be wrong, another example, although it's not a large amount of dollars, that's a, projected wise, it's going to be up over 20%, but we think that will balance out considerably. So just like you heard me say 100 times, just like in your household, you can only, what's your income versus what's your expenditure, well, we do a similar thing here, that's exactly how we look at it. Where we should be at about 11, well, we ought to be at right, 8, 9% remaining on our revenues right now, we're actually 93%, not anybody should get overly concerned about that, it's that time of year. Then the expenditure side of it, we've actually brought in, let me go back and address that, 107,000 when you include the lost payments, and yet we've spent 131,000. Well, a lot of that is because we experience costs throughout the year. An example is, hands, you need to stop writing checks for our program and our software, but they want all their money at one time, so they don't want you split it up over 12 months, and I'm just kidding when I say that. Those are the type costs that we end up incurring in the first, second, fourth of the year that don't pay us benefits, but you live within your means. So actually, we have a negative cash flow, as we sit here on the general fund right now, of about $27,717, but there's more to the story, and we'll talk about that in just a sec. Under the water and sewer, which is again, operations, where we should be at about 89% remaining on revenue, we're right at 90%, which is a good place to be, pretty close, we'll see those numbers average out, we have revenue of about $104,000. And again, going back to expenditures, this is where we do can influence some control on that, we have expenditures of 72,000, so that would suggest you have a positive cash flow of about $32,000 when you combine the two. We end up, at the end of the day, having a positive cash flow of $4,827. Right now, we're encouraged when we see the lost collections, which we're very dependent on, and the Splot dollars coming in, which we're dependent on from the capital side of it, that those are continuing to exceed the county's expectations as well as the other municipalities' expectations. I will take any questions y'all might have. It's a little early in the year, as I say, oops, or, we hope we've come out, just like we did last year, we were very positive in our position as far as revenues versus expenditure.
Thank you, Coach.
Yep, I've got a couple of other things, Mr. Mayor, we're going to go ahead with those. So we talked about, a couple of comments about the five-year rate plan, and I want to appreciate the comments, as I know the council does. And let me tell you, there's actually an economy to scale, it's brought up, that yes, we've all experienced the cost. I told a story earlier today about a loaf of bread that cost $5, my wife didn't want to know why I didn't buy it, and why I didn't buy it, because it was $5, that was a choice on me. But reality is, is that, you know, we, everyone in this room has experienced these costs, so, and we are too. And I think what you'll find, you know, if you look at the rate study, and of course, like I said, I think this first year, if they adopt that, we're just making up for what costs we experienced last year. But if you understand that there actually is an economy of scale, was suggested, so the more customers that we have that use right at 5,000 gallons, the more that average comes into play, because you heard me say earlier, some of the averages were below $38, but the more they become constant in that, actually, everything operates that much better, and there's an efficiency that comes in, it's actually what we call the efficiency curve. And right now, we're below, efficiency curve is between 40 and 70%, so if, once you fall between 40 and 70%, things cost you a little bit less, not a whole lot less, but a little bit less. Go over 70%, it costs you a little bit more, go below 40%, that costs a little bit more. So, you know, in that regard, we're close to the 40% mark, but we're not quite there. On the issue of, of industrial waste and those type of things, so just so you'll note, just because the comment was right, as we identify a user, their cost and their fees can be generated first on what they actually discharge, and actually the makeup that they're discharged. So what we try to ensure with that type of policy, and it's very similar to what you saw with the conservation rates, the more used, the more you pay per thousand, the same can be true for industry and also for the type of discharge they make. So that way, we try to ensure that that burden isn't back on the residential side. So for those that might have an interest, come by and see me, I can certainly send you this rate study report, pretty thorough, a lot smarter than what, something I could put together, these guys do this for a living, and they help communities like us figure out how the best way to try to capitalize on it. The other thing I mentioned to y'all is, for the finance, is premium renewal of house insurance, looks like I said, 8% increase is what's Looks like I said, uh, eight percent interest is what's to be proposed, we'll bring that back to finance and talk about that in the coming week. Uh, how many in the room are excited about that? And that's a good example of what Mr. Grissel pointed out, we're all kind of experiencing those costs. But what, what point can you, uh, uh, do something about it? The other one is, is budget adjustment, we actually budgeted this year for, uh, our November election. If you remember, we thought that was gonna be part of T-Splotch. Uh, we had budgeted an amount of seven thousand dollars, the counties proposed an amount of seventeen thousand dollars in order to administer. So, uh, for those that don't know it, or maybe didn't, uh, take note of it, again, with, originally, the county proposed a, uh, county-wide referendum for a transportation tax that has now not gonna go forward. And that will help all the municipalities offset the cost of elections. Well, unfortunately, or fortunately, depends on your perspective, uh, whether you wanna paint it up or not. Good news is, and I can do that, the bad news is, we're gonna have to adjust our budget for that amount of, uh, the difference between seventeen thousand, seven thousand, or so it's like ten thousand, we're getting a commitment from Hall County on that. Uh, the other one is, is the design architects, we do need to get together with the committee, and so, meaning, uh, the design architects, you know, we tried to schedule that previously, and it just didn't work around the, uh, finance committees. So let's try to nail that down tonight, if we can. Any questions that the council might have on those items?
Uh, yeah, you mentioned the November election services, uh, the recommendation at this point is coming from, is it Hall County or both counties combined?
So it'll be both counties, Hall County will administer, for Banks County as well, the, uh, administer, but, uh, I'm actually gonna talk a little bit more about that, and, uh, good job putting the information together, about where you qualify, when you qualify, how much you get to qualify for, and where the election will take place, which I'll just tell you real quick, everything's here. So, and we'll talk about that a little bit more. But they'll, they'll take, uh, the opportunity to be presented for Banks County as well, is what I'm trying to say. But they do Hall County offers, all the administration.
Okay, and as far as the, you know, the seventeen thousand dollar, you know, preliminary price tag on that, um, would they be contributing any whatsoever, now that there's no longer, uh, Splotch?
Yes. Not at all.
But they're only doing the administration from elections.
Well, they, they're offering administration, they're putting machines in, they're programming the machines, uh, they help, uh, tag, uh, actually, with personnel, actually coming in for the election itself.
And that's a, and that's a cost.
Unfortunately, it.
Can I tell you, I come to suggest earlier, that's if people were to start with, probably say, great election, that's in a bill for election. Can I do that? I'm joking.
Sure they will appreciate it.
I'm joking, I'm joking, I'm joking. Is it all I have on this one? Can't, can't we do that? Okay, uh, Banks County, okay.
Yeah, T-Splotch, I have got my responsibility, it's just, remind the council. Yeah, the dollar amounts I can change to a percentage that they present to the state, add one percent collection to the state of Georgia, and they don't want that to be part of the distribution. And I'm just waiting for it to show up on our doorstep. So, you know, maybe it'll be here by next week. Uh, we actually started collecting, uh, maybe we'll start paying them the money on October first. So they, they run that down. Yeah, it is.
Can you say, when y'all was on your, is everything up there?
Correct.
Okay, and why, sir?
So, uh, this is one of those things that just never seems to go away. Uh, everybody knows about our generator, and, uh, council appropriated the existing generator, which is a monster, about half the size of this ring, certainly operated, uh, most of the city anyway, radiator went bad. I've got to chase council pretty, uh, making improvements on the radiator, nothing ever goes like it's supposed to. They approved nineteen thousand dollars, that's made up working in our favor. Ordered a new radiator by Coming South, Coming South brought, only found out it didn't fit well, there it goes, so I'm trying to make this quick. So we ended up having a new radiator rebuilt, no, not rebuilt, brand, built brand new. So now, the council has to go and put that back in the housing, and then put that back in the generator. Uh, it was supposed to be here last Friday, they were. They shut up the radiator, but caused the flint weather, flint weather, and they chose not to work that day, only to say that we're gonna show up today. And if anybody in the room wants to see if they showed up today, they did not. So hopefully, before this week's over with, seems like every event we run into, just overrun with work to do, then we'll have that back up and running. Uh, so, I'll keep you abreast of that in a second, sure. Uh, Athens Street spill, if you weren't aware of it, um, we had a sewer backup, a lot of manholes off Athens Street. It's actually posted, uh, the newspaper covered it, as well as, uh, WDUN, and we appreciate that. Uh, we've notified EPD, we did that, they still won't have it. We've actually, uh, changed our estimate now, we thought we had an excess of ten thousand gallons, but by the new formula that the EPD uses, it looks like it'll be, uh, less than that. Uh, fortunately, it wasn't a structural failure with the infrastructure, it was a backup, uh, probably more so due to what you flush down the toilet, or ones that ends up in our waste stream, uh, caused the blackout, uh, backup, and hats off to our guys for addressing that issue and quickly and promptly. And then, just to let everybody else know, uh, we have monitoring requirements that, uh, so we monitor what creek levels are, as far as any discharge, uh, coming into the creek. And we do that, could be all the way up for a year, that we monitor that, and, uh, we haven't had a spill since, I think, two thousand nineteen, and, uh, I should knock on wood. Uh, because it's part of the nature of the business, uh, but this is a good opportunity to remind everybody, careful what you might not flush down the toilet, because it might end up in our system. So we'll keep you abreast if anything changes on that. Uh, belt bridge water line engineering's been done, uh, construction bids are out, and they'll be open September fifth. You'll hear, we'll talk about that in a minute, the utility committee. Uh, improvements, the economy well, uh, generator gone forward, so we closed down Fifth Street pump station. We're taking that generator, we're moving it over to the economy well site, because they didn't have an entrance generator there. Uh, we've already started some of the work over there, we're gonna actually do, uh, some, uh, exterior, uh, work on ex, uh, building, as well as putting in a new generator, good opportunity for that. Sludge issues, who wants to talk about the sludge? Nobody in this room trusts me. Sludge is a byproduct that's created from your waste stream, basically, it's solid. That's why all our buddy units know about before we go to dinner. But in removing the sludge and disposing of it, this has been a challenge for everybody north of Bacon, uh, that's in wastewater operations. Uh, we're very fortunate to have a great relationship with Havisham County, uh, that they take our sludge, and, uh, we're very appreciative of that relationship. If anybody has noticed, it's raining quite a bit lately. Well, one of the tricks with sludge is, you have to dry it out. It's kinda hard to dry it out when it pours down rain, so, we're working on that issue, we're actually expanding a few dollars to, uh, actually store the sludge under roof, per se, you'll understand a little bit more of that, uh, but a minimal cost. It's an issue that, uh, you know, we're very sensitive to, uh, probably because we're seeing other communities experience cost disposal, they have to ship it all the way out back. So you can see where that's a big benefit for us, or, again, very appreciative of our friends in Havisham County. It's actually, uh, we did work for them, and they did work for us, uh, it's one of those, that's what local government should do. Uh, we were talking about the adoption of the five-year rate plan, trust me, uh, utility committee, I wish I could point to one person up here we can beat up today, say they're in favor of it, but nobody is, and so they're kinda examining that as well. Uh, I sent everybody an email earlier, I know you've seen the rate study, you have it in your possession, but there's a new email out there, if you just wanna refresh and remember on that. Proposed well development, so we met with, uh, our geologists and our engineers about proposed well development. Council's gonna hear some opportunities about that, uh, in the coming time, and, uh, we're identifying some additional well sites for drilling, so, uh, for the public's benefit, you'll hear more about that as it matures, for council benefit, uh, you'll hear more specifics on that, some of it may be land acquisition. Follow up on that, unless anyone else got any questions?
You're good enough with me. Okay, the bottom's part.
So, yeah, so y'all, get this one wrapped for a while. So you all already approved this capital expenditure, the idea of council is, they'd like to, uh, bring Wi-Fi, and that will give us opportunity to put in sun security cameras, so it'll start out small, and it can grow as time goes by, so. Uh, you're gonna see some concrete padwork being done, uh, there as well, so it'll come, uh, in the next week or so. Uh, the block may already be on the ground, uh, park, so that's moving forward.
Just a clarification, I've been in the free Republican lot, I, I, if you think you're in a, if you have a lot, I service one, okay? You saw what they did a couple of years ago. Okay. Well, I'm seeing guys with additional license, so it's always going to be first, through August, from third, um, I believe, for the year. So, and you got packages, you got one, good one, and you turn in next week, not individuals.
And there's a packet over there that just gives you information, if you want, if you want, uh, information on qualifying packet, you'll need to come see Tanji.
That's, why don't you talk, I could agree with you, I'm glad you're over, like, council does do some really good package.
Yeah, that's online, so a lot of this information is online, and, uh, thank you for recognizing that, because that is, gives you an idea of what you might be getting yourself.
Yeah, I just pointed out, I'm, I'm.
We, we made that up a couple of years ago.
I don't know, I'm messing with you. Okay, come with us to the change.
So, uh, the engineering's complete on that, uh, we've had the survey, we just got all the survey information complete. Uh, bid development's underway, I'm a little concerned, uh, when I say a little concerned, this is something that's very timely. We're affecting Carter Street and Chattahoochee Street. Uh, Chattahoochee, as you know, is access for, uh, uh, school, and this will require some closure of the street, so once I get the bid documents in, and we can feel comfortable about the number of days of closure, we can communicate that with the school and start. On this bid, we probably need to define when the work can take place, does that make sense? Like, November first to December, and we close for three days, or something like that. So, because, uh, we know this is gonna affect schools to some extent, so, uh, bear with me, that should be, uh, coming forward. I, I actually opened up half last Friday, uh, and that's gonna be a pretty big capital expense for us.
And the resourcing?
I don't know if we'll ever get the resourcing done.
Most funny, so, yeah, I mean, I saw some vehicles up on Athens Street, I thought they were gonna go to the toilet, come by, and it broke down, everywhere.
So, I'm rather upset, this is kind of an example of, uh, the marketplace. Originally, the engineers coming back and made some adjustments, uh, because of cost, uh, we're anticipating we'd spend well over four hundred thousand dollars, uh, in bid development, uh, for the council, and the numbers of the street that we've posed. Since then, it's getting the marketplace, and that'd be your vendors to be available for. So, I mean, I, I was on last week, and I'm not happy about it, but they said we'd still be two or three weeks, or the first of September, before the bids would be out on the street.
Okay, the sheriff there, maybe, I'm not sure if we can.
Yeah, so I had the pleasure of having, uh, lunch, uh, with Hall County Sheriff Joe Couch last week, and, uh, we did this a couple of years ago, he would, uh, we've had some discussion about neighborhood watches as well, which kind of prompted all this to him, but anyway, he's very open to the idea of having another community meeting, and I'm sure the council would be as well, schedule that sometime, uh, in the later part of September, so everybody can attend. Also, uh, incorporate Speedy, which is our sheriff over in Banks County, uh, and provide that opportunity. So, I'm sure this is somebody, something that everybody would embrace. Uh, we've seen the numbers for, uh, North Hall in, uh, Banks County, as far as incident reports and those type of things. Uh, you know, I keep saying, we live in a wonderful community, well, when you see those statistical numbers, we live in a wonderful community, and this is a good opportunity for the sheriff, uh, both counties come up and improve their relationships, uh, and restart, uh, some of the neighborhood, neighborhood blocks programs we have. So, uh, you know, like I said, I'm thinking if we put a part of out, we can advertise it well, and I'm sure, would y'all be open to the later part of September and scheduling that? So let's see between the both, we can both in this room at the same time, and, uh, see if we can't go forward. And by, uh, what I'd hope to happen is maybe a, an hour long program that, uh, defines some of the things and services they offer, as well as some of the statistical information that, uh, the community might find interesting. There's a repeat.
Okay, pick up requests.
Yep, so, uh, you have a copy, if you didn't see it on your boxes, so we have one, I guess I can pull it up. So a gentleman came by, Mr. Davidson, last month, or actually, under council, maybe ago, uh, when I was here, I was pleasantly on vacation. But anyway, so Mr. Davidson would like to propose, and you saw this in your box, a location that he could use on Athens Street. What you also saw, and it says, please read, and this is actually what you're looking for, you're not familiar with it, uh, is that he's addressed the location, and originally, when I talked to Mr. Davidson, great guy, uh, when I originally talked to him, he was, wanted to know if he could use a public street or a right of way, and, uh, I said, we'll just make your request, because, you know, that hadn't, we had passed in food truck ordinances that would allow for the use of that. And then, law changed, uh, this last year about licensing, and not to get those confused actually, better for somebody who uses a food truck. So you have a nice letter from, uh, uh, Mr. Robinson, or Mr. Davidson, rather, but you also got this note from Joey about principal use of the property and how that's used. We will be placing that on the agenda unless you want to take it to committee.
What, uh, the mayor, safety committee, or?
Uh, probably planning, because that's the issues that, uh, Joey has brought up, uh, his primary use of the, uh, zone that he's concerned about.
Let's start there and see if he can be just wants to, if he has any other issue involved.
Okay. Alright, we'll share that with me, and we'll, we'll take that to them, and I'll communicate that with, uh, Mr. Davidson.
Okay, Mr. Friday, he's not tired, is he?
No, let me tell you, Lamar's Cross, they're recognizing him, he is the longest-serving mayor in all of the state of Georgia. And they're gonna recognize him Friday afternoon at four o'clock. I put copies in everybody's box, if you can attend, uh, it'd be most appreciated, there, he's a great guy.
Four thirty, yeah, I think it's four thirty.
I'm pretty sure that's, I can make it for you, four plus.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think it's four thirty.
And we proposed that we do a proclamation, recognize him, but he said he wants to wait till he's over fifty years before he gets anybody.
Forty-two minutes, forty-five?
Forty-three. He's a good guy, and been very good to all the cities and counties over the years.
That's the Republicans, are great.
Uh, it is, but I understand they are asking for an RSC, try and get ahead, count.
I, I understand, David.
Right. I don't think they've run anybody off.
Okay, you're going to get a qualifying for the tissues for, for cover that, take, take the money, take the ranking, after the four thirty here, take up the package, Tanji. Again, a member of the, I'm not really certain, but you're gonna have to show change because of IBC.
Right, and so there's, uh, Joey's put together the changes that were proposed, y'all should have all got a copy on that, as well as, uh, eventually, what we do with this affects the subdivision regulations. as well as the zoning. So, those will come forward too, and those will require a public hearing. This is adopted, unless y'all recognize that you voted on this last month. So, then the changes to the subdivision regs and the zonings will be identified as well, and we'll propose public hearings on those. It'll just reflect what you did with this document.
Any, uh, reason on that petition? Three sixty-five?
Right.
I saw y'all walk in, I said, here a week earlier, I wonder if that's a purpose.
Yeah, yeah.
You heard your patient about that.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
I said, they walked in here, they were somebody, I don't know if they misunderstood or not. I said, I did recognize them.
Did y'all have any comments on that?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So, we, so we are requesting to table for next week. Um, we heard the concerns of the community and the planning commission. And we want to try to address some of those concerns. And so, we are requesting that we table the hearing for next week to give us enough time to address some of those concerns, talk with the planning commission again, and then, and then go back, go back through it.
Do we give a vote on that tonight?
Uh, you know, it is, that's when they advertise the totally. I mean, that wouldn't identify it on the agenda as an item to be considered, and we have to publish that in advance. Plus, I would want, probably, Mr. Maro, we'd probably be well-served if they made the request and writing for the council's consideration next week, if you think.
I would agree with that, yes, sir.
So, if y'all want to put a request and writing to us, the council can take action on that. You know, see, as mayor, I don't know, because I didn't advertise it.
That was my question, I want to show the citizen didn't advertise our hearing today. And I, I also sent the letter. I think that would relieve you without having to be here.
Okay, well, we just want to make sure it is tabled, and y'all want, y'all want to vote it.
I will say this, the public hearing would have to go forward. If advertised, public hearing, and it'd be a disservice for that to be taken. Because we wouldn't have a means to communicate that.
But if you have a public hearing, we read your letter, we request to, to take action then.
Yes, sir, so we can get that to you this week.
I would encourage you to be in attendance next week, because of the public hearing, and because of the actions of the council.
Hey, hey, let's do it, but.
Yeah.
Search phone. Yeah, all right. Thank you.
So, and you, we'll accept an email if you just won't send us a request and writing. I'll, I'll say it all to the council.
Okay.
Thanks, Dan.
Okay, thank y'all. Okay, is that his? He's on Main Street, on the twenty-third, in March and June, in Harris's, that's at the depot. His office side is money, money, the eighth, fourth of his month. Like, the depot, everybody's money, the fundraiser.
Avery's Mochik is all I know, it's ten dollars, everybody's supposed to come up with ten bucks. Supposed to be the best. Matter of fact, I didn't know, uh, we have a renowned chef that's actually doing it for us. I saw the flyer the other day. Uh, I went out on their Facebook page, and updated. But I think you can get, actually, come by City Hall, or contact them on Facebook.
I bet somebody can bring it as well.
Right.
Next, Mike Mill, the one who did the worst, go against the city.
Do a lot of people out there at the side of us?
You can think. They'll hear from us, I can, I can, they'll hear from us.
Yeah.
But it is, it is a service available, especially for emergencies. Ball Festival is Saturday, September thirtieth. Information's at, at Lula Ball Festival?
It is, and I think there's, I think we checked there, beginning, sort of, the side of this Facebook page for that, that information. It's like last year, get your blue salt liner, Justin.
And how blue, they get, oh, you know, that correct?
Right.
Okay, we got a few more social media meetings, originally at four o'clock, and how about that? We got scheduled finance committee meeting.
Yep.
And then utility committee meeting.
Yeah, I put a few items on there, a few utility committee posts. Uh, I want y'all to see, well, if we do pass the fifth, you'll have the bid documents, so you can make a recommendation. We've got some proposed, new mapping proposals for water and sewer. And, uh, I can't get away from the roof replacement. We tried to do that two years ago, the Way Street plant one. We didn't need it then, but it looks like we need it now. Anyway, that's something we can talk to the utility committee about as well.
So, when do you want to?
Uh, again, if we want to meet after the, if we want to meet after September fifth, we'll have the bids in for the wall line, y'all can make the recommendation on that. And then, so, I'm gonna be here, so y'all tell me what best works for y'all.
Assuming we get back on the fifth.
So, we can do it anytime after the fifth, six, seven, would work?
I'm available, I would, I would just request to meet, you know, five.
Yeah, well, that's what we get. So, at least I'm gonna be challenged for you, because you don't know what they want to do.
I don't know that far out.
Well, why, why, once you find out, we know either one of those, they.
I would be able to be that Tuesday, though, is that gonna be too soon?
Well, we actually have a bid opening at ten AM, so we can do it on Tuesday. But if, yeah, we can do it at five o'clock on Tuesday, if that works for y'all. So, does that work for you as well?
That's the fifth?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Just going to know if he's gone, so, what you're going to do, if it works, Jean, he's already obligated. He said he can do whatever he wants.
Whatever.
So, you want to try and do it this week?
Yeah.
Uh, Thursday?
Not, not tomorrow, probably, it's your doctor tomorrow.
How about, uh, well, Thursday, we got quarter. So, uh, four thirty.
Four thirty?
Is it four or four thirty, duh, four o'clock, four o'clock. So, I mean, if we want, is there, you got a big agenda?
Uh, sure. Probably four o'clock, maybe it's time.
So, if y'all want to meet, you want to try to meet Thursday, five?
Pretty good.
And I'll send the note.
Seventeen.
Right.
That was easy, though. Is that all you just gave us, it, wasn't it?
Right now.
I think it would be at this time, it's getting a bit, it's getting a bit. Okay, um, we're not having a session now, can we? Before we do that, does, does the citizens' comments, the more guys on this, the council comments, when they go to the executive session, does that sound good?
I've got a quick question on the agenda. I know it didn't make the agenda for the work session, but I did see this in the inbox today. This, uh.
Dave Wilson, Dave's here, and I asked him to speak to it, and he brought it Friday afternoon.
I just, I was just looking at it, and I understood the timeliness would be, you know, September. It looks like it's a request for September twenty-third, so I don't know. You know, what all's involved, and, and the approval or questions. But if we can get it on the agenda for next week, next week.
We ought to hear from Dave, just a couple of comments.
He's here to get, yeah.
He can give us some maximum, we're pretty good.
This is where we are now, right? Put the comments in.
There we go.
Where'd it go, Tony?
That worked out well.
Dave Wilson, uh, Main Street. Uh, we're just, we're gonna close the alley for an evening, or basically find noon, until, say, ten thirty, eleven o'clock, to have a small festival that actually starts, say, five thirty and end around ten. And it'll give us enough time to get everyone out of there and cleaned up. We open the alley at about eleven. Like to request leaving the public bathrooms open. Since it's just right there, it'd be a short walk, short distance for people. Uh, there's only these small, probably fifteen vendors, just selling different items. We're trying to find them for a holiday, like, new, new items, I mean, put in our stores that are local-made. And hopefully, it's a way for us to meet new people, and for the community to do something.
Yeah, that was, that was all my question, was, you know, how many vendors, I mean, what are you looking at? And are, are you, are you doing any food vendors that evening as well, or?
Um, as of right now, I'm not.
No, okay.
I mean, if people have baked goods, that, or cottage license, anything, that'll be set up for food trucks or anything like that.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You have more questions?
So, we will put that on the agenda for the council's consideration.
Okay, you both, you guys get comments?
Does it comment, sir?
Yes.
Professor, you have more, wait. Okay, so, kind of, thinking about where I'm gonna start here. I had a tree die in my yard. Now, I didn't really like it that my tree died, because I really liked that tree. Normally, it wouldn't be a big deal, except for me, unless I lived in an HOA. But the problem is, I do not live in an HOA. And in HOA, they tell you, you better get rid of that dead tree. Now, like I said, I had a tree die. Called my buddy that removes my trees, and does my tree work for me, and said, look, getting home schedule, I need this tree cut down. Yep, I did a lot of looks of it. But again, I don't live in an HOA. But of course, we know all too well, and you know, old business always stays new business when it's always coming around, and it's all explained right there in that forty-five pages. Intimidation. I was met, after a meeting one night, by somebody to tell me how I had a dead tree in my yard like I didn't know. Now, I can see the trees dead, wasn't a danger to anybody, but maybe my chicken shed, that some people don't like anyway. So, um, it was intimidation about removing that dead tree. Again, this shouldn't be a deal, shouldn't even be mentioned. But the city of Lula is not an HOA. It's not the mayor's HOA, you're not the president of an HOA, you're the mayor of our city. So, of course, the tree was removed, but it still stuck when, you know, the intimidation factor come up, that, you know, hey, you got a dead tree in your yard, you know, talking, you know, wherever it's, what I saw it was, and, you know, I can see if it was one of my neighbors. I love Garnet, can see from his house, and Jewel never said a word about it, and Elaine didn't. She come over, she never said a word about it. So, I wondered, you know, and this is my thing, if you're gonna run the city like an HOA, clean up around your own doorstep. Because I went over to that yard, that person, their, the trees over there are so dead, they were rotting and falling on the ground, in the front yard. Mine wasn't rotting and falling on the ground, it just died, the pine leaves were still on it. It was still on it when they cut the tree down last week. But we don't live in an HOA, we live in the city of Lula, where we'd like our small-town way of life to come back and be restored. We've never had any toughness of prior administrations, and we would like to have our city back to the way it was. Thank you.
Anybody else?
You got a good thing on tree. I've been raising candles for four or five years on a tree on the left of my driveway. It's not being cut down, it's dangerous. School bus has turned around and rode it up, it means Hollow County. Turned around, it's still sitting up. Y'all have a light that y'all paying, light bill's on, and you can't even see. I would like to see, if you please, that's the first time I've seen, please, y'all, could you just look at it, if I could, if that? Okay, now, back in June, I asked the city manager to try to stop some of this ruckus going around. Just keep continuing, he says, well, we need a little ruckus up here. That's what the city manager said. Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand, if we need a little what around here?
Ruckus, that's what she said about out the door, right there in front of Jean, Joe Two, and me.
Rubbish?
Ruckus.
Rubbish. Ruckus, about all this bitching and all that going on now.
I never made such a statement, but that's okay.
But anyway, we had a police up here, try to calm this stuff down. Okay, it still continues. Now, we use these microphones right here for hater groups. They're talking about, excuse my language, but I'm gonna quote on it. You can look at their, their little pages, the hater groups, their comments. I've been maintaining this for about four or five months, and a couple of weeks, too. Now, these little blogs that talk about one of your state of councils playing with his nuts, needs to stop. I'm dressing young to ask y'all, as members, to see if you can stop this crap. Because I'm gonna stop, I'm gonna take Hollow County. Now, when you got stuff like this Etsy haul, and people using these blogs, and they just keep on discriminating people and stuff like that, needs to stop. Now, this is coming from y'all's meetings. Now, let me read one right here. I would like to just tell you, this one, to his little friend, this past week. It's hard for me seeing it. Okay, this is right here. Come hang out a bit, grab a bite to eat, and chat a while. Okay, unless you scared of Felton. Um, if he does, I don't blame you. Sissy kisser, bitch ass, oh, say, kissy-asser, um, and a weak-ass bitch. Now, I'm gonna hand this to the lawyer, you turn around, give it to Joey. I asked Joey, did he help, he said, oh, no, I might get investigated. Now, come on, what's the city attorney gonna do, represent when y'all get blasted? I understand, but you give more people three minutes. But here, I'm gonna give this to the city attorney to look at, about all this, this stuff needs to stop.
So, for a clarification, you're telling me?
Yes.
You did want to direct that towards me, is that correct?
Yes, because your little buddy that was down there with David, they wanted to quote it out, it's on there.
Who are you referring to as little buddy? I'm, I'm not sure, I've, I've never seen that.
Okay, you showed up with Mark Louste, you showed up with Mark Louste this past weekend, and David down here at Vinnie's shop.
Uh, that was at the weekend, though?
Well, whenever it was, it's on there after dates, well, I'm fixing to get the date to the club dates. But all y'all have been little meetings, then y'all get on Facebook, that I'm a weak-ass bitch.
Well, before you say y'all, I, I believe me, I, I have said nothing of that sort.
Yep.
So, make, make sure, make sure that that's clear.
When you hang out with your little friends, and y'all put them blogs, I need to stop.
So, I live in the city of Lula.
I understand, but last time in the other election, in the other election.
Your offer.
In the other election.
Felton, Felton, please, please go sit down. Um, can I address?
It starts with trash cans.
I just.
It has nothing to do with city, it starts with trash.
All right, y'all stop, stop.
Anybody else get some comments? I thought that the council's got a big old comment right over here.
I'm sorry. I understand that you're upset, but for you to address all of us up here, to think that we can stop, to think that we can control what other people say, is mind-boggling to me. If it came, wait, you've had your time. If it came from my mouth, Tony's mouth, Joe's mouth, Garnet's mouth, that's one thing. But what you're bringing to us has nothing to do with city business. It has nothing to do with anything that any of us said. We cannot control what other people say on social media. I think that's the last time anything like that needs to come up here before us. That's a personal problem, that's not a city council problem, and that is causing chaos in our city meetings by people coming up here thinking that there's something we can do about that, because there's not. There's not a thing that we can do about that, that it, that's something you have to deal with on your own. I'm not the law, I'm not a lawyer. I'm up here to do city business, I'm not to be here to babysit, I'm not here to control people's mouths. This stuff is making our job hard. We cannot do the work of the city for putting up with this. That stuff needs to stay outside of these doors. And if it can't stay out there, then people don't need to come in here with it, I mean, don't come. If that's what you're gonna bring, don't come. That's how I feel about that, sorry. I just can't.
I feel exactly the same way as Denise said.
Thank you, Denise.
Do you want to thank, anything else on that?
What's that?
You got anything else on that, is that it? You have more comments?
No.
Let me say one more thing, I'm sorry for being late, I didn't get off work till six o'clock, and thank y'all for coming to help.
I would like to thank everybody for coming, putting their two cents worth in, even though enough people didn't put their two cents worth in. Anybody else? Anybody? Hi, Tony.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just echo the same sentiment that Denise shared with you, uh, it certainly does make our, our job difficult, uh, you know, with outside, you know, interference coming in, um, but I just want to say thank you to those that do, you know, take this seriously, and do take it seriously enough to show up, uh, because I know that you all have, you know, many other things that you can be given, and I appreciate you all being here, I just want to say thank you.
Okay, uh, I don't even have much of an executive session here.
More to come?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, sorry.
I'm sorry, I caused that, I'm sorry.
All right, okay. Um, Mr. Mayor, can you tell us this evening, the things I want to know and understand, Mr. Mayor, do you yourself, like, all of the decisions that you feel to make the better place to work, live, and end up, chance for the future growth, and right before the city council? Or do you consult off the city manager and our city attorney before you do so? Uh, because me and a great deal of little citizens feel the articles that they, and others we read about in the newspapers, or encouraging for anyone wanting to come, work, or grow, any kind of various industries, kind. Please tell us or write all of our citizens, what is your method of accomplishing your agenda? Do you feel that consulting with the city manager or city attorney and others would give you a better insight for growth and improvement for everyone's concern before bringing it before the city council to be approved on? Or do you feel that you don't need to do so? That's my question, Bill. I'd like to ask.
You're not going to answer?
He's got ten minutes, I'll go to my office.
Yes, your question.
I'm not allowed, am I answering, or you ten minutes, you got ten minutes? I shall do.
Okay.
Oh, sir.
First of all, I make very few decisions in this town. I have a city council, the folks, everybody in this, in this town, you know? Are you hearing me okay? Do you hear me okay, before you go? Do you hear me?
I'm trying to hear and understand you.
I make very few decisions here, the city council makes all the decisions. Answer that question, I do not make decisions, if I have an opinion, I have an opinion, I consult, I consult, Dennis, you can ask me, I consult Joey, you can ask him. Did I answer your question? Did I answer your question?
Well, yes, I'm trying to understand what you're doing, that's all I want to understand.
I just, I, I, I answered your question.
Yes, I thank you, it's for my understanding your answer, I just wanted to know, what do you do yourself before you consult others? Do you go to the council, you make the decisions first?
I make no decisions.
And what do you do to the decision?
I make no decisions.
Or do you consult other staff and then play it to the council?
I make no decisions, it's all council decisions, not mine. None of these decisions, not your own decisions, the council's decisions, I have no vote in this. You understand that? I have no vote, I don't like those decisions.
Okay.
My hands are tied, I have no vote. You understand that? You can answer that one. What's your other question?
Okay. Well, I think I'm trying to understand what, um, decision you take as a leader, leader or mayor, but I just wanted to know, if you make the decisions on yourself, and then go and play it before the council, who then to vote on, or do you consult other members of the staff of the cities and make a decision what you want to do, and then leave it to the council?
Can I answer this question twice already?
Yeah.
I can answer that one.
Okay.
I make no decisions, the council makes the decisions, I consult Dennis, I consult Joey. I make no decisions. It's all under the, because I have no vote. It's in the chart, I have no vote, because I see the chart, it says, I have no vote. You understand?
Okay. I'm hearing you. Just want to get an understanding of how you do things, that's all, really, not, I want to know that. Uh, because, you know, the elections coming on, we're saying, do we feel like, what are the leaders do we have, that's willing to get out there and fight to make things better for everybody, and not for one or special few? Or do you have other people trying to persuade to do you what they want for them to do?
Yeah.
So, you tell us what you want to do or vote there, and we'll say it, vote there.
Good.
That's what, that's what I, that's why we have the elections.
Yes, sir, of course.
And we will make the decision who we think is going to be making things better for us as a whole, where we can live, work, raise our children and educate them, or what, that's all we can turn on the block.
Good. Good, and look, I'm tired of this up two and a half years, I don't understand relation, two and a half years from now. Anybody else? Okay, all right, now, I have no other executive session.
I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion that we do adjourn to executive session.
I'll second that.
I'm gonna tell you to second the official executive session, all the others, aye?
Aye.
Are we not going to wait till the jury hits you? And so, the third, the fourth?
Oh.
Mr. Mayor, what you might want to do is recess this, and then tell Mr. Republicans arrives, and then reconvene, and then take, entertain a motion to go into executive session. I don't know what, I don't know how Mr. Curry feels about that, but that might be a cleaner, easier way.
Okay.
Next.
I didn't know, yeah, yeah, here he goes. Go to a very short break. Then the next session. Oh, we'll, we'll take a short break. We'll, we'll now, uh, listen, I guess I need to nullify the vote for executive session.
That worked.
Sure.
Hey, I want you to nullify it.
I make a motion to nullify the, uh, request to adjourn for executive session.
Mr. Mayor, and second of all, nullify the vote for executive session till, till the bottom of our turn, all the others, aye?
Aye.
I'll press the note. Take a break until the jury hits you. Now, we'll text, actually, the executive, the executive session, we will, we'll try to motion from, have that, Tony?
Sure.
Based on our discussion in our executive session, um, I make a motion to initiate removal proceedings to remove Councilor Jean Bramble and approve Ab Hayes to initiate the process to commence the investigation.
Now, I'll start with that. By the time I head, so, I'm going to submit to remove Jean, uh, initiate process to remove Jean Bramble from the council, and approve Council, Council Ab Hayes to do the investigation, all the others, aye?
Aye.
I'll press the note. Take care of that, we're done with that, take a motion, is there?
My motion's up there.
I'll second.
Take a motion, take a whole sound, is there, all the others, aye?
Aye.
Sure, sir.